PM and I would like to open the FY twenty four public or rather budget public hearing. And with that, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. And so if you guys could all mute and rise and recite. I pledge an oh, hi, everybody. If you're if you're in the meeting, if you could just hit mute. We're going to pledge allegiance and you're happy. We're happy to have you join along with us. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So welcome everyone to the FY twenty four budget public hearing for the Neshoba Regional School District. At the beginning of the public hearing, just like a couple of notes on process really quickly, especially for those of us who haven't done before. The public hearing, we normally like to hear a little bit from the superintendent and his administrative team. They can provide us with any updates, anything that is new or things that they want to highlight about the budget. And then we will open the floor to members of the public, anyone who cares to weigh in or ask a question. And keeping in mind that the public hearing isn't necessarily for the school committee to deliberate. As you know, we have reserved some time afterward for that. But I'm not looking to restrict you from speaking, school committee members, if you feel it is necessary or prudent. So it's best if everybody uses their golden hand to to ask to be heard and I think that the members of the public who are here, you have your name on your screen. That is helpful. Thank you so much. And except for laptop, is that you Kirk?
Thank you. I have a single device. That is not me.
Okay, thank you. So there's somebody under the name laptop. If you could just maybe share or rather change your name on the screen, that would be most helpful. And so any quite, I can't also see everybody at one given time. So I'm scrolling back and forth to just be patient with me. And if you are being ignored by accident, please feel free to jump in and interrupt me later on when I seem to be ignoring you. For the
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If you direct people to use their golden hands, you mentioned, that'll put them to the front of your your sort of your Brady Bunch queue when they raise that. So.
Oh, fantastic. Hot tip. Thank you. So if you guys don't have any questions around that process, we're going to get underway. Alright, seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent for a brief update on the FY twenty four budget.
Madam Chairman, I hate to I hate to be a Budinsky, but there was one little thing we have to do first. And I will do it for you. I will move that we open the public hearing on the twenty twenty three twenty four Neshoba Regional School Budget.
Okay.
I will second.
Thanks, Joe. Alright, so we have to vote then. Is everybody ready? Or is there any discussion on the motion? Does anybody not want to open?
Your salads and the fish.
Thank you for that.
Now the world now the world knows.
Alright, Joe, I'm gonna have you vote first.
Yeah, although yes, and just a reminder, we have to also vote to close the public hearing. So I vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Ever helpful. Myself, yes, Scott.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And I think that's ever Sharon. Did I get you Sharon? Yes, she says thumbs up. Think I got everybody. Alright, so now that the public hearing is officially underway, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Downing to provide a little bit of information for the community.
Madam Chair, I want to thank you and thank the entire school committee for this time tonight, but I also want to thank the public for showing up. As you know, we're having salads for dinner tonight, so forgive my interruption. I thought my my microphone was muted. But yes, we are here to present in the budget hearing, the proposed FY twenty four School District Budget. What I will share with the committee, this is a truncated version of the budget versions that you have seen to date. And we'll go into that detail, but it lays out and I've added some content to it. There is some content that was added specifically for the Joint Finance Committee meeting that was not formally presented to this committee. So I've added that as well. But Mr. Mo Karen, if you'll go ahead and display the slide deck, we can begin. So thank you very much. We'll go to the next slide. As you know, we described each time that we've worked on this budget. It is built around what our school district mission is to inspire and challenge all learners to realize their unique potential and become active contributors to their community. This is a joint effort that we all must do together. And it meets our vision, our vision for all of our students to be able to be their best selves, pave their path and impact the world. And within that, we steep all the work that we are prioritizing through our core values of academic achievement and personal growth, voice choice and agency, lifelong learning, a safe caring inclusive community, collaborative partnerships, innovation, and a sense of belonging for all. So if we're able to do these things through communication systems and protocols, we we are going to be able to to actualize our vision as here in our theory of action statement. So it's through those systems, protocols and aligned curricula, innovative practices and shared leadership and equitable opportunities for all, we will inspire and challenge all those learners to realize their unique potential and becoming active contributors of their community. This is what our budget is built upon. And within the strategic work that we've done and in prioritizing the work that we need to do in our budget, we look at both equality and equity in the budgetary decisions that we made. So as we described to you on January eighteenth, and you will see on the slide deck. Excuse me, I do have a bit of a soft cold here, so if I cough, forgive me. On the slide in red, you will see the budget workshop presentation to the school committee that was given on January eighteenth of this year. That includes all of the detail that explain the elements of the budget that is not in tonight's hearing presentation. But in equality, we look at ratios to understand that we have balance across our schools. Those ratios being two hundred and fifty to one for assistant principals, principals, guidance counselors, one dean per eight hundred students, class side standards not to exceed twenty four students per classroom, with the exception of kindergarten through second grade classrooms, twenty two students per classroom. And that, of course, excludes large classrooms like bands and courses. When we talk about equity, we talk about specialized programming and targeted learning for students through IAPs five oh fours, English learner programs, Title One, and our multi-tiered systems of support teachers. And that's where we have to to be able to staff according to the demand what we're seeing in each building. And so the the presentations we gave to you on January eighteenth explained all of that in detail. Next. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mo Karen to talk about the budget timeline. Mr. Mo Karen.
Alright, I'm a little rusty on finding my my unmute button this evening. As always, thank you for the opportunity to present to school committee and certainly thank you for the opportunity to present in the public hearing format as we move, continue to move forward in our budget timeline process. It's an honor to have been in the district so long and now to have the opportunity to show our mission, vision, core values, and obviously our strategic plan through this budget. We've reviewed the budget timeline with school committee before, and we certainly note all the things that have occurred to date. You'll notice that we've moved the public hearing to this evening due to the later release, the new governor's budget that occurred approximately two weeks ago. So this is all the work that's been done to date. Obviously, it's not extensive of everything, but certainly encompassing of making sure that we have a budget being put forward that speaks to and as a result of the work that's happening within the district. Not not just next year, but moving forward into our strategic plan. This slide the committee has seen before. It's not been updated as our bottom line shows. Our FY twenty four proposed operating budget still stands at sixty four million nine hundred and two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars, which represents a four point three percent increase over the voted FY twenty three budget that we are within right now. I presented this before. I just want to review again. This is the budget work in summary that we've done to date, starting with our budget workshop that occurred on January eighteenth, moving into last week where we presented that sixty four point nine million dollar value for our budget for next year. These are the changes and summary of updates that have happened to that time. We spoke to them last week at school committee, but they're here for consumption as well this evening. The question came up and sort of the proposition last week at school committee about showing the change in the assessments to the towns over the course of this budget season. So what I've done here is I put the school committee dates all the way to today and the proposed operating budget that was presented at each iteration of those meetings. You can see on the right hand side, Bolton Lancaster and Stowe proposed change in member town assessments. So Bolton, as we began, was at six point oh four percent, Lancaster seven point six five percent, and Stowe at five point seven eight percent. Where we stand today with our sixty four point nine million dollar proposed budget is Bolton's at a three point three two percent increase, Lancaster four point seven six percent, and Stowe at a two point two point eight two percent increase from FY twenty three. As we've shown throughout the process, the summary of our budget drivers are here. So this is really breaking down, and you can see the percent increase that makes up the overall increase in the budget through this methodology. As we've shared, the special education out of district rates that have increased outside of our control play a large part in the increase of this budget, as do our salaries for existing personnel relative to those contracts. And obviously, our utilities, like we've discussed this before, a lot of people are facing, but as the school committee is aware, we've made some moves this year to take advantage of collective bidding for oil. We're working with some new utility consultants, so we're beginning to see a positive trend against some very difficult and challenging market conditions relative to utilities. Here's a different look at our drivers. And so as you can see, the salary and benefits take up approximately eighty percent of our operating budget and all other operational costs make up that other approximately twenty percent. So I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Downing.
Outlined in the January sixteenth presentation, we talked about our changes in staffing. And we have added Dean positions to each middle school. Six specialists have been converted to instructional coaches. We shifted one guidance counselor from Neshoba Regional High School to Florence Sawyer School. A reduction in FTE across the district based on class side standards and a reduction in administration based on enrollment. We've also had an increase of point four FTE in teaching and learning for the Director of Innovation Digital Learning position, all part of this proposed budget. The result of that has been that Unit A positions have been reduced in this year's budget by four point three positions, Unit C support staff positions reduced by two point oh FTE, and administrative positions have been reduced a result of one point two FTE positions.
As we shared with the school committee last week, our chapter seventy educational aid and foundation enrollment came in, which gives us a much better and sort of clearer prediction of our estimated revenues moving into next school year. On the far right hand side, you can see the proposed and the change certainly in chapter seventy educational aid has been significant in helping to bring down our assessments to the towns based on our current proposed operating budget. Also, in the top three rows, the far right, those are the minimum local contributions that are provided to us through the state in our part of the assessment slides that we'll look at later.
Thank you. So we're going to take a moment to to dig down into the town assessments and this portion of the budget. Excuse me, this portion of tonight's presentation was given to the Joint FinCon meeting just last week. So our assessments are made up of three basic things, the minimum local contribution, the variable assessment, and the operational assessment for high school debt. The minimum local contribution is determined by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and is calculated by the state using the equalized valuation of the town to determine the town's ability to pay. This is commonly known as the wealth factor. So when we look at minimum local contribution over time, this gives you a sense of the scale. Excuse me, moment. This gives you a sense of the change over time of what has happened in our minimum local contributions as determined by the state of Massachusetts, where Bolton and Lancaster have increased at rates greater than Stowe over the past five years, with Lancaster experiencing the highest dollar increase in one point three million. Over the last five years, Bolton, one point two six eight million, and Stowe just over point eight million or eight hundred seventeen thousand. The variable assessment is calculated to determine the fair share each town pays based on the definitions within our regional agreement. So to help us kind of understand what that looks like, the five year role average enrollment is calculated, determine the fair share of each town. This has been Bolton's change in enrollment over the last eleven years, actually. And you can see that in recent years, Bolton has declined in their enrollment from their high and FY fifteen of one thousand eighty four to today, one thousand eleven students. Lancaster has had the opposite effect. Lancaster has had an increase in students participating in the in the school system through the foundation enrollment definitions by DESI over the last few years. And you can see over the last four years, there has been an increase in enrollment. And then when we look at Stowe, you can see Stowe has had a much more dramatic decrease decrease in public school participation. As I stated last year, that's a major factor in that is a decrease in school age children within the town of Stowe over that period of time. So when you put these pieces together and we just look at one year change, this graph really shows dramatically the changes in Bolton and Stowe. And you can see the red line touching the blue line as Bolton and Lancaster has met in terms of school district participation. And you'll see later that actually Lancaster now has more students participating in the school system by five students than the town of Bolton. So when we look at the foundation enrollment, we take the five year average. So the most recent five years are expressed in the five year total on this particular slide. When we look at the change of the five year average over the last five budget seasons, you will see the impact of those changes in enrollment and how those five year averages are beginning to collapse together. So our three towns are actually gathering more of a share of the variable assessment. So when you look at the increases in the variable assessments, you can see those trend lines as Stowe has remained relatively flat. And proportionally, that has increased Bolton relative to Stowe. But with the increase in enrollment numbers in Lancaster, Lancaster is increasing at a rate greater than Stowe. I would anticipate if we have four more years of change in enrollment in our towns that have been consistent with the previous four years, Lancaster in four years will actually exceed the town of Bolton in terms of their share of the variable assessment. So capital cost or high school debt is also defined in the regional agreement, and that's based on one year enrollment at the high school. This is an actual headcount of students walking through the doors of our high school from our three respective towns. So here's this year's capital assessment expressed in the left hand column of ten one twenty two, which is the October first date of which we base this assessment on. And this is the graph that shows you what our high school enrollment looks like. And you will see that this year, for the first time, there are more students that reside in the town of Lancaster attending Neshoba Regional High School than there are students in Bolton. And the students in Stowe have been declining over the last couple of years as both Bolton and Stowe have experienced a dramatic increase in enrollment in Miniman Technical. So that's how it's expressed in terms of the change of share in the high school debt. Because it is based on one year factors only, with Lancaster having more of a share based on their enrollment at the high school, their share on the high school debt for the first time is slightly higher than the town of Bolton. And so when you combine the variable assessment with the minimum local contribution and with the debt assessments, you can see what the total assessments of our three towns are over the course of the last three years. And Mr. Mo Karen, you'll have to forgive me, my my screen is is closing the box, but I wanted to point out the red box in the bottom right hand corner where that change in time for Bolton in dollars has been essentially two point one million dollars. For Lancaster, it's been two point two million dollars or and back one, thank you. And for the town of Stowe, that same the same dollar increase over that five year period for them has actually been one point one million dollars or half the amount that Lancaster's increase has been. And that is based upon the factors that are defined by the state of Massachusetts and defined within the regional agreement. Mr. Mo Karen.
So all of the result, the result of all of the, again, state of Massachusetts factors and our regional agreement brings us to this slide here. We have our proposed budget and we have our minimum local contributions. We know our local revenue. We know the amount that needs to be assessed. We understand the fixed assessment, which is based on those minimum local contributions. And then we have the resulting variable assessment that Superintendent Downing spoke to. So these are within those slides prior, however, you look on the bottom right hand side here. We have our FY twenty four total dollar increase for each of our towns. It's also represented as a percentage over last year's assessment for each of the towns, which was also put on one of the initial slides that showed the change in the assessments over the budget work this year. So this is where we are with our proposed FY twenty four budget relative to our town assessments.
And with that, Madam Chair, Mr. Mo Karen and I are happy to entertain any questions from the public.
Alright, great. Thank you so much for that information. I know it was repetitive for many of us, but perhaps the first time some people have heard it. So indeed, we will open it up to questions. And I encourage people to use their golden hand if they would like to say something. Mr. Horsh.
Yes, thank you. I do not have a question. I have a comment, if that's okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, and and maybe I would defer to Mr. Gleason on this. I believe in the hearing, the school committee can respond to the community. But in terms of deliberations of the committee, they would occur immediately after we close the hearing and open the school committee meeting. But Mr. Gleason, you I will defer to your expertise.
I would concur wholeheartedly with that assessment, Superintendent Downing. Yes.
Fair enough.
But to be clear, members of our committee could respond to a member of the public who comments during the hearing.
Alright, so one way or another, Mike, we're going to hear from you. So maybe it will just be a little bit later and we'll let the public go first.
That sounds dark, but okay.
One way or another. Um, oh, I see. Mr. Trussell, go right ahead.
Mr. Trussell from Lancaster. Could the superintendent explain the large percentage increase in special education and special education transportation versus regular education and transportation costs going down?
Yes, I can, Mr. Trussell and Dick. It's good to hear from you. We haven't talked in a while, so I look forward to talking with you again, by the way.
I've got lots more, Kirk, so we'll go.
Yes, oh, good. Oh, good. Oh, good. Yeah, so Mr. Trussell. The increased cost in special education really is a direct result of educational mandates, of which the school district has no control. One of those is that the department, the OSD Department, Operational Services Department, has allowed private school, special education schools to increase their tuitions by fourteen percent. And these are schools that we send our students to because they have a very particular need that can only be serviced by those private schools. And they need those funds in order to do that. It turns out our superintendents are currently lobbying the state for some extraordinary relief as well as changes to the circuit breaker reimbursement rate so that in future years we can absorb some of those costs. But in addition to that, Mr. Trussell, we've had some students move into the school that cannot into the school system that cannot be educated within the doors because they have specialized education programs that require added displacement into those private schools. These are new students which we'll be incurring the cost for next year. They make up almost in totality the increase in special education costs. We are reimbursed for for special ed transportation. And then we also get reimbursements for our regular transportation, which is done at a ninety percent rate. Mr. Mo Karen explained to our committee at the last meeting, however, that only our ninety percent of our students live outside of the one point five mile limitation for Live outside of the one point five mile limitation for reimbursement. So in actuality, it it's more like a point eight one percent. We're getting uh reimbursed on transportation costs.
That's uh i- i- it just struck me that when you add the two together. And I'm not knocking special education, but it makes up forty-four point five percent of your dollar increase.
Thank you, Mister Trussell.
Okay. Just waiting for a golden hand. Feel free to think and respond if you think it's necessary or. You have a question or a comment?
Uh, this is Alexandra Turner, Alex from Lancaster.
Hi.
I didn't, hi, I'm sorry. I couldn't find my, I couldn't find my little golden hand. So first, I want to thank you for a good process. Lancaster is obviously not really excited about. The results, but we can't knock you for the process. It's been, it's been very, very helpful. Thank you for the hearing. Um, the question I have is that one of our, in addition to Nishoba's increase, we're facing. Increases from Minuteman, as you know, and proportionally, those are. More expensive. Um and of some other seems, and I don't know the breakdown, I probably should of what students are studying. At Minuteman from Lancaster, but as the superintendent pointed out, there is more people attending from Lancaster. And the trend and the projections look like they that will continue. Um in some communities, they've tried to incorporate um some more technical, for example. Um IT education in the system. Has that been considered? Um is that beyond the scope?
Alex, it's good to hear from you as well. I look forward to coming back in front of your board again. Yes, uh actually, within the educational plan of the new high school building uh that we're proposing and and hope to pass this fall. It talks about the educational pathways and those pathways include some technical theater plat- pathways. Of course, we already have the EMT program, uh our robotics and engineering pathways uh as well. And so. We are looking at that as as those pathways and our high school team is actually working on revamping. Uh their presentations to our middle school eighth graders year over year because we recognize. That it's more affordable for us to educate our students within our walls than it is to educate them outside of our towns. So within that, though, we want to continue to maintain our our relationships uh with Minuteman. Because they offer a service that we frankly can't offer that is very important to many school uh children in our school system. Interestingly enough, uh regarding Lancaster, is Lancaster has maintained a very steady enrollment over time of the number of students. That are attending Minuteman High School. And what we've seen in the decreases in enrollment for Bolton and Lancaster. Are really with the advent of the of the new building coming on and the addition of the computer science track as well as the engineering track. At uh uh Minuteman, there's attracted students from that, those two communities. Uh that is some feedback we have received. So uh our Minuteman enrollment has really gone up. From a school district perspective, the last two years. As a matter of fact, this year, for the first time. The town of Stowe in terms of a headcount number of students attending Minuteman now exceeds the town of Lancaster. As I believe sixty-one students from Stowe attend, whereas fifty-six students from Lancaster attend and twenty-four students from Bolton. Attend Minuteman Regional.
Thank you.
You bet.
Great question. I'm gonna go to Kendra Dickinson.
Hi, thank you Kendra Dickinson of Lancaster. One of the I um line items that jumped out at me was school choice. It was zeroed out. Over several years and then I saw twenty-five thousand dollar allotment for it. Are we doing school choice? And if so, how many of those special education students? And trust me, I have nothing against special education students, but how many of them are school choiced in?
Uh I think uh thank you, Miss Dickinson, and I'm gonna ask Mister Mulcaren to help me a little bit with this one. I'll 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 give the narrative and I'll let him give you the the the. Rationale there. Um currently, we are closed for school choice. We really only have a handful of kids left in the system and they're all at the high school. If we were to have a student with special education costs, uh we can compel the sending district to pay for those costs if they're. Costs that we do not, if they are programs that we do not offer within our our school district. However, we don't find ourselves in that particular position. Um with our remaining enrollment, but Mister Mulcaren can speak to maybe some of the dollars and cents of what you see on the budget sheet regarding school. Sheet regarding school choice.
So regarding the school choice tuition line, and thank you for pointing out that that difference there. Um I think it's been zeroed out over the last several years. I believe because the tuition in that we receive for the small amount of students that we still have coming in for school choice. Was sort of offset to the school choice out tuition. However, what I've done is I've I've worked to make sure that we're clear and accurate. So we have approximately five students that will still be school choiced in next year at about five thousand dollars per student. And then if you look on our system wide um expenses, our school choice tuition out um is on there as well. And that is approximately, I think, four hundred and ninety thousand. So that's a combination for those students that are going out. That's a combination of the base rate of five thousand. Some of our students participate in virtual schools. Which is a little higher. Um and then there's also some special education associated costs with that as well.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you. Thank you for your question.
I think our next golden hand uh is to Anthony Romano. I guess I said that right?
I'm here. Thank you. Um I have a comment if that's okay. It's uh relating to the budget. Um I briefly wanted to bring to everyone's attention the slow roll of expenditure with regards to divisive diversity, equity and inclusion. And continued movements towards an expensive and divisive racial and identity focused school district. Um in twenty twenty-three, professional development costing thirty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Was uh given by experts in white supremacy and white privilege awareness. Which included decolonizing classrooms and curriculum and anti-racist social justice art education, among other things. Now for twenty twenty-four, uh we have a racial equity audit costing fifty thousand dollars, potentially six figures. And given by uh supposed impartial third party. Reviewed by an ideological and agenda-driven subcommittee and administrators to inform uh multi-year steps. Um so I highly suggest, once again, all parents are review the uh diversity equity. And racial justice visioning resources, which include links to Framingham, Concord, Carlisle. Dedham and Newton, which provides a roadmap to the future of our school district. Uh and if you have any questions, um uh please reach me at MpowerNishobaParents@protonmail.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think I slapped a golden hand on Lindsay Chafe's screen, but I might be wrong. Did it come back down, Lindsay?
I'm sorry, I did put my hand back down. I have um one question, I think, then another comment, um and perhaps that will come later. My name is Lindsay Shavz and I am a resident of Stowe, um and a parent of three children. Um who will be all enrolled within the Nishoba Regional District. I had a question regarding funding and wondering if this is based on a weighted student funding model. And if the dollars are following our students as someone who's fairly new to the district.
May I ask Miss Shavis to to explain that just a little bit more? Lindsay, I'm not quite sure what you mean by weighted funded.
Right, so just a funding method that's based on really individual student needs and that the dollars follow the student. So for example, a student who may be leaving Stowe and for example is an L and maybe duly. Identified as um a student with an IEP, does that, do those. Do we have funding that's based on an individual student's need?
Well, it not funding. We have expenditures that we line up for those types of things in terms of. Um looking at offsets to our budget. So say, for instance, for. Uh high dollar special education students that are taught at a district, we get circuit breaker reimbursement for that. And circuit breaker reimbursement has been funded at seventy-five percent, so it doesn't cover the total cost of that. Um that's one of the things we're advocating for, that that be raised to ninety percent. Um and so that's where we do get some of those offsets is. I hope that explains that piece for you.
So the funding is really based on teacher salary, is that correct?
No, the funding comes from. Yeah, the it, the funding comes from the state uh and from our local assessments as I described earlier. So it's not. Um and and those are all based off of enrollment factors because they come down to a per student factor for all state aid. And then our regional agreement, based on enrollment, points to what each town is required to contribute to funding.
Okay. And that money is distributed equally to all schools or based on population?
Yeah, that's right. It's distributed and that's one of the reasons why uh uh the first slide, uh one of the early slides when you talked about the standards and how we. Equip our schools by class sizes and administration ratios and guidance ratios is an effort to show that balance across our schools.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, great. I think Dana Ellis was next and then to Kelly.
Oh, hello.
Hi.
Sorry, my camera also isn't working. Um hello, I am from Stowe. I am the mother of a first grader and third grader at Center. Next year, I'll also have a kindergartner and I am just concerned about um reducing. The literacy and math specialist to create these new coach roles. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. Um both of my children currently receive literacy literacy support. And one of my children also receives math support. And I think the district really needs to prioritize learning loss and funding real solutions that will work towards the gaps we are seeing post-COVID. Literally is uh literacy is an area that was identified as a subject is needing attention coming out of the MCAS results. So much so that the timeframe for reevaluating the curriculum um was pushed to earlier. So if the curriculum is undergoing changes similar to the new math program, why would we reduce specialists now? And has there um has the student need been evaluated in relation to specialist time? And also have we seen any other districts where coaches have proven effective? I've definitely talked to a few um other uh teachers that I know in other districts who have coaches. And obviously they're saying, I mean, more bodies, the better, but there more teachers would be better. Or, you know, having somebody not so administratively focused where now a coach has to do not only the specialist job, but also administrative tasks. Like, does that take away from the students? So I guess I just wanted to hear a little bit more about your thought process in this switch.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. Our our coaches aren't administrators, I'll start with. They're not administrators at all. As ma- as a matter of fact, their jobs will continue to be. Uh front facing the students and all accounts. So when we're talking about coaches, I can give you some examples of of school systems that use them that have been highly effective. Including my former district and where I utilize them personally as a principal. Um coaches are the key to us developing an effective MTSS system. And in our targeted review, they cited in several accounts that the multi-tiered systems of support is a priority for our school district. In terms of elevating uh the education of our students. For us to do that, we need the coaches because the coaches are the champions. They're the leaders of the data meetings. They're the ones getting into the weekly meetings with the teacher groups. Who will be analyzing the data, developing the targeted interventions both in the classroom and possibly in pullout situations. And in their roles, they will also be providing some intervention services as well. Those intervention services. Predominantly to be happening within the classroom, but they may have some pullout scenarios as well. And what is happening is prioritizing that. We're advancing the multi-tiered systems of support agenda in a way. That is gonna be able to uh help us and will be more informed using the data tools that we've been able to purchase. So as we come down in future budget seasons, we can responsibly come forward to say. These are the people we need to match up with the demand that we see with our students. So this is a critical move that we need to make. To to make a it really a substantive sea change in the instructional model across the school system. For the very purpose of addressing uh any learning delays that that may have been a result of uh COVID nineteen pandemic. We're already seeing that in the data sets and at our uh August twelfth meeting. I know Miss Friend is gonna be uh sharing data on on um uh the progress and growth our students have been making across our KDA schools. With this committee.
Just that clarification at, that's our April twelfth meet, April twelfth meeting.
Oh.
He said August.
August twelfth is not a good day for me. April twelfth meeting is is what I meant to say.
Can I follow up with another question?
Please do, yeah.
Yep, so if the coaches identify the need for more specialists, how long would that take to become effective? Would that be another entire budget year before, you know, we institute that? And just side note, I just can't imagine being able to in the classroom. Provide the kind of services that my kids are getting when they're pulled out into these small group settings. That I have found have really made a huge difference for them being able to catch up and get to where where they have been.
Well, we will continue to have specialists. Uh we have, we will continue to have them in school. Um it, so we we have converted uh six of those folks into um uh coaches. One for literacy match in each town. Um we also have identified. That for the students that have individualized education plans that work with the literacy specialists. They will continue to get those services as written on the IAPs because the services are defined as what they need to do to achieve their goals. And our special educators have those services. So by utilizing our special education department as well to address those. Within their schedules and we believe we have the staffing to do that, that will also free up space for our other literacy specialists. To work with students who are not currently on IAPs. So it's all part of that ecosystem of how we provide uh pullout supports. And I'm confident we're gonna be able to continue to meet those needs under this model.
So could you just answer the question on how long you think it would take if they decided to?
Thank you.
Yep, yep, just wanted to.
Yes, Dan, I couldn't remember the second part of your question.
It's okay.
Um uh so I think we would have to look at that through our cycles. I think we're gonna have to come in, bring in our coaches. There'll be some training involved that I know Miss Friend is already organizing and and uh working with some organizations on providing them the type of leadership training we'll need them to have. Particularly in driving data wise meetings and data meetings with our faculty and staff. Um so that is something that uh we're gonna have to measure, but as we get there, we know we're gonna have at least the fall data assessments. And possibly some progress monitoring tools that will inform us beginning into the next budget season because then we'll have to look at that. And each year we take a look at where we are with our funding and staffing because um uh for instance, uh we didn't fill. Uh uh two positions in Lancaster this year uh to due to the fact that the enrollment didn't come in in those those grade levels. So in scenarios like that, we look to those FTEs and then target them in the areas that we see are the most needed.
Alright, thanks so much, Kirk. Thanks to Dana.
Thank you, Dana.
I think that Kelly was next.
Hi, thank you so much um from hearing um from me today. My name is Kelly Waller. And I live in Stowe. Um I have a first grader and an incoming kindergartner. Um and within the district at Center School. Um and I just wanna thank um this budget committee and the school district for. Um all the work that you guys have been doing around this. Obviously, um you know, in some of the comments that I've heard. Uh it's important to do these needs assessments to figure out what the need is. And it changes clearly based on um the enrollment and the different types of students that we have in our district. As you know, we just heard about the special education costs that have um increased a little bit. Um so, you know, I just wanna commend um the school district uh and the budget committee. Um for supporting the equitable and inclusive process that led to the strategic plan. That kind of gave us this overall vision for our budget. Um. We know that we have to, I'm a an educator in another district. Um and we know that we have to not only acknowledge student difference, but celebrate that difference and appreciate it. And provide every single student with what they need um to succeed in the classroom. Uh so I think it's really important that the um the equity audit is happening to address those needs. Um in terms of family identity, student identity, um so on and so forth. We know that so many families are different. Um and structured differently. Um and we can't make any assumptions about the students that we have in front of us or the families that are in our community. Um it's, you know, as a teacher, as a parent, um from dealing with the pandemic. We know that there is a huge mental health crisis. Um and those, this this crisis was impacted by the pandemic. Um we are trying to fill in these knowledge gaps as educators, uh but we also have to be aware. Uh, but we also have to be aware of the the whole child, right? And so as a teacher, I can just say in my district. The increase in um, mental health needs is is has been exacerbated. Um, we know that. I'm I'm reading something from the Centers for Disease Control. This was in an Education Week article published in December of twenty-two. Um, and. We know that death by suicide is the leading cause of death for ten to fourteen year olds. Um, we know that it's the third leading cause of death for fifteen to twenty-four year olds. Um, and I think that. Teachers, schools also have to deal with this problem because you can't separate any piece of the puzzle. Um, of the student that you have in front of you. Um, and we know that students are impacted. Um, adversely if you're in a disadvantaged population. So I just want to say that it's extremely important, in my personal opinion, for us to do an equity audit. I've worked in districts where they have occurred. Um, I've heard the school committee and people on the budget committee. Talk about how they didn't know what our equity issues were and and what needs to be addressed. Um, so I just, I'm just really happy. As a parent that that is going to be happening. So thank you to the budget committee and to the school district.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
And so I think Keely had her hand up, but I'm not sure. If you took it down. Keely, did you want to speak?
I can speak. Um. Keely Nausacki, I live in Stowe. Um, I have a first grader and. Uh, my son would be a preschooler. Um, kind of piggybacking on Dana regarding the coaches. Uh, my son gets reading help, but he does not have an IAP. And it's been tremendous for him over the past year and even at the end of last year. And I think that's um, one of my biggest worries if he's not pulled out of class. That he won't get the same attention. And if the coaches are in class. Are they going there? If I'm understanding it right, they're coaching the teacher in how to work. With specific students? Is is that right?
Yeah, Keely, I'll kind of paint a picture for you. Um. Co- coach is such an interesting word, right? I I've done a lot of coaching like in terms of sports in my life, so it's not in the sense of like a um. Um, a, 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 say, I was a basketball coach, the coach on the sidelines. You kind of watches and then teaches and practice, right? It's not that kind of work. Uh, what happens in the classroom when there's coaching in the classroom, it's think of it as live teen teaching. As as two educators work together. On uh, some some moves they want to lift in terms of their lessons. And they teach that work together, work with students together, and then they have the opportunity to collaborate in private and uh, settings outside the classroom. Now. We will continue to have the interventionists. I want to be clear about that with everybody. That we will have these interventionists. They're 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 in the flow charts. You'll see them in the flow charts on the January eighteenth presentation. So we will continue to provide those interventions for for students. What the coaches are going to help us do is lead the work amongst our team to identify and understand. Who are the students in most need of those interventions? So that we are consistently getting to the students that we need to get to. Uh, so that we can intervene and provide them the targeted instruction they need. Uh, prior to ever meeting an IEP. So it plays a critical role in that way. So interventions will continue. Um, it is a a single position that we've converted over in those literacy um, positions.
Um, because then the worry is I've heard rumors that um, several specialists, I don't know if it's several, have resigned, and I I'm pretty sure one is retiring.
None have resigned. Yeah, none have resigned. Um, uh, we do have one that was retiring. Uh, that was announced. Long before we ever put this out there. Um, and that we've actually had several already reach out to us uh, with interest in being the coaches.
Okay, and then. So the the coaches, will they float? Verse be in that room? Is it almost like an, it almost sounds like an assistant teacher to me, but they float from room to room?
Yeah, no, it's not like an assistant teacher at all. And and I think the model is going to be based upon, there's some nuances to it that that are involved with the master schedule. How you uh, build your class sizes. And you work with your teams on making those decisions. So it's a very dynamic process. Uh, that they're working through. And I know our principals are working right now. With our assistant superintendent Lauren Friend on developing a schedule that is going to try to build uh, as much common planning time together as possible. Uh, thus simplifying the schedules to make those opportunities uh, more often for each teacher.
Okay. Can I ask another question um, different from coaches?
Uh, sure.
Okay, um, so regarding the equity audit. Um, right now it's stated at that fifty thousand dollars. If over the course of time performing the audit, if it costs more, where where is that money coming from?
Thank you, Keely. Over the the, as we look at the RFPs, that's the contract, so we'll be reviewing those. And uh, Mr. Mocan, I believe our goal is to have those completed by uh, the April vacation, correct? So we'll be reaching out to the people that are going to be on that committee. Uh, by April first, so that we can get that work done by April vacation. And that's the contract. That's what that is. So the contract won't increase there. What we may learn from it, we may come back to our committee and say. You know, here are some ideas, some strands, some places that we want to do some more looking into. And we know we want to take a deeper look at curriculum, but we're trying to level set that element right now. As as we're trying to collect uh, various parts of the curriculum and and really do an assessment of that. Uh, and get it all. Together in one place before we we move into an equity audit in terms of of textbooks and curriculum and things of that nature.
Okay, and what what actually brought about the equity audit? It was that from, I know at Center School, we had the surveys regarding belonging and in certain other questions, and I think some of the other schools had. Like surveys or questionnaires. Were there incidents or is this just kind of the routine and why did we choose now? When it's just such um. Inflation is so bad and and families are struggling and and this is kind of more money coming out of a budget where. We need our our kids to be educated. I know it's, it may be helpful in certain areas, but at the same time, it's a a lump sum of money.
Yeah, Keely, that's a, that's a good question. Thank you for asking it. And. Uh, you know, in our strategic planning process and through my entry planning process. Uh, you know, we picked up information certainly, we've had incidents. Um, we've had uh, uh, racial incidents, we've had antisemitic incidences. Um, we've adjusted our trainings as a result, for instance, in high school sports, and I'm happy to report. Uh, from I had a meeting, a conversation with Ms. Ms. Rich today that our students. Have uh, been admirable on all the fields and courts this season. In terms of any of those types of incidents, but they're not, we're not free of that and we're not free of that in our past. And as as uh, a colleague shared just uh, this week with me uh, in in my new superintendent's workshop. Is that the idea of I've been working hard and I believe that I've always been doing a good job. And then I learned more and could do better. And so this equity audit is. A chance for us to learn more and find out where can we be better? Because we think we're doing the best we, and I think we are doing the best we can right now. But what do we know that we don't know? What do we, in other words, what do we need to know that we don't know today? These are the things we need to find out. So I'm going to be meeting with with some students at the high school that have invited me to join them in some conversations. Uh, because um, and and you know, they they want to feel heard in terms of what their experiences are. And when I look at at frankly, just uh, one piece I can cite for you. Um, is when we look at our our enrollment of students and courses at our high school. It's disproportionate in terms of black and brown students enrolled in college prep courses versus higher level courses. It's pretty significant, and we're going to be coming back to this committee with some specifics on that data in the future. So. This is our opportunity to learn, and I'm taking it a real learning moment. And the scope of this audit. Is 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 going to take us down pathways of gender, uh, gender equity, gender identity, uh, uh, intellectual disability. Um, and and uh, you know, very subgroup data. To help us understand where are uh, our populations performing? What are they telling us in terms of how we can be better?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Keely.
Thank you.
Going to go back over to Lindsay.
Thanks. I just wanted to piggyback off of the two main themes I'm hearing here. Kirk, first of all, amen. I agree with you. Um, data is powerful and data tells a story. We may not know. Um, and there are a lot of stories, those are surface things, so. The racist slur on in the bathroom stall is something that people is that's visible and people see, but there are many things we don't see and we don't know. So there may be things that you don't see or don't know about me because you can't see them. Um, and same is true for every kid that sits in front of us. I'm also an educator. Um, I want to commend you for the work that you've done. This has been an inclusive. Process since the beginning. You went through a year-long process of. A listening tour that involved three communities and listening to teachers and students and families and community members. And that informed your strategic plan and what I hear you presenting, and no, I have not combed through your budget with a fine tooth. Fine tooth comb, and I don't want to. I did manage a budget at a school in Boston for many years, not of sixty-five million dollars. Three million, but um. I commend you for the work you do and you have been doing. It clearly is aligned with your priorities. That came out of the strategic plan and the strategic plan, I know, Mr. Downing, you didn't sit. In a room and conjure up on your own. You did that based on data that you collected from your listening tour and from your. From the information that you received um, throughout that year. So the process supports this budget. Um, so I in turn support the budget that you are proposing. I do think it's been equitable and I we believe in voice. And in the process, and it is inclusive. Um. So I think that's my point to that piece. Um, I did hear a little bit about the coaching and just to piggyback on. That I'm actually currently in a coaching role. Um. And to speak to this kind of. Pull between a specialist and a coaching role, I also agree that teacher efficacy. We know is tightly tied to student outcomes. Um, and in a coaching role, you're playing many roles. You're often co-teaching. You're not an assistant. You're not. You're being paid just as much as your colleagues sitting in the same room and you're playing the same role. You're helping to improve practice on a school level. Um, and I think. As we think about collective efficacy, this morning we were working in our instructional leadership team around collective efficacy within our teams and within our school. We know that's going to leave lead to improved um, student outcomes, and I believe that you're not. Pulling away services or interventions from students that need it, because then we wouldn't be doing our jobs as educators. Um, we would actually be failing our students, and I would. Hope that I'm not about to send my three children to a district that is failing their students. Um. So that's just my um, input on coaching and also. Just to kind of piggyback on what I heard about the equity audit. Six sixty-five million dollars, fifty thousand dollars is. A drop in the bucket. Um, I know that as someone who's managed a fairly large. Um, budget and had to think about my strategic plan and how it aligns, and it seems like you've aligned your goals with the budget that you presented.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thanks, Lindsay. Um, I see Karen's hand. Karen, what do you think? Just something clarifying or?
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe um, because the coaching thing has come up in previous meetings and it's clear that. People have some, you know, some nerves and concerns about what does that really mean and how to envision it. So. I just want to ask a couple of clarifying questions because I kind of have a vision in my head of coaching for my own district, but um. The the coaches will be working with regular education teachers and with reading interventionists, so. I would, I, maybe that's one of my clarifying questions. Is part of their role to give those regular teachers who give that tier two instruction as well? Some of that coaching as well, so that they can work in like, say, the K one level to catch some of those early pieces. That some kids need a piece of intervention, but then will not get to needing. So pull out type intervention from a reading specialist. Is that part of the role?
Um, Ms. Divine, I I think I need to answer a question when we convene as a school committee. We're still in the public hearing.
Um, there's no, so that's fine, Kirk. We can do that. Just for the record, there's really no rule around school committee members speaking in the hearing.
I just want to be.
Which is totally fine, so.
Whatever you need to do, it's fine.
So Karen, hold on to that. We'll talk about it later, and maybe Kirk, you and I can speak later about the rules of a public hearing, but um. So if school committee members, just for now, if you have thoughts.
As long as it's just not deliberation between the committee members, is that what you're saying, Madam Chair?
Um, I mean, we're going to deliberate later, so I guess we can save deliberation. I think that the hearing doesn't have. So Karen's a resident and Karen can. She can ask questions at the public hearing, but. She's going to have an opportunity later, so we can, so Karen, if you don't mind, maybe just to make everybody feel a little bit more comfortable, we'll wait. Um, and and maybe we'll circle back to a later date. Um, so Lindsay, um, your hand is up again?
Just a suggestion, is the um, job posting or description available? Because that might help clarify some of the confusion or. Or rumors or whatever. Maybe.
Our our team, no, it is not available and we're crafting that. Thank you.
Okay, so I think once that's available, that might provide some clarity, like. In Framingham, coaches are actually providing interventions for twenty percent of their time. Um, so that may end up being part of the job and we just don't quite know that yet.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm assuming you'll make a decision that's in the best interest of the students and the teachers.
Yep.
Awesome, thanks. Just want to give the public a little bit of time to think if they want to ask another question. All right.
Madam Chairman, if there's no further questions, I would move to close the public hearing.
All right, Joe, thank you for that. I will second it. Any discussion? Probably not. All right, so let's take the vote. I vote myself. Yes, Joe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
God?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Cullen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
And I think that's everyone, if I'm not mistaken. All right, so the public hearing has come to a close. Thank you so much to the public for coming and listening. Um, you all can exit the Zoom. As uh, the school committee just stretches a little bit. We thank you for your participation and all your time.
Thank you so much. Great work.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we'll just wait for a couple more friends to leave. Alita, could you perhaps? Oh, okay. There we go. We just have a couple more friends. Maybe they have stepped away from their computers if you want to. Maybe bump them out. Thanks so much. All right. Hail, hail the gang's all here. Let's uh. Uh, begin. Everybody ready? So let's call to order uh, the regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee uh, now at seven thirty-six. We've already pledged allegiance, and so at this stage, guys, we're just going to go right to any deliberation, any questions, and I'm going to um. I'm going to actually give it to Karen first, Mike, I hope you don't mind. Uh, so that Karen uh, can kind of continue with her thoughts and before she before it goes poof out of her head like mine. And then Mike, maybe we can go to you as well. So Karen, what were you going to say?
So I guess I'm just, it's clear that um, people are feeling some anxiety around the coaching model, probably because they don't totally understand. How it works. And to them, a coach means losing intervention. So I guess. And I actually thought, um, I think it was Lindsay, the the parent that said. If if the job description is posted, because I think. Any clarity we can give to people, and I really was just trying to 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 clarify. Um, I I I think coaching. Be a very, very strong model, especially if you have a really strong hire. Um, it's got to be a really strong coach. But coaches can actually bring down the numbers of kids needing intervention. Because they're helping in those younger grades as they move into to the upper grades. Um, and they do a really deep dive into data that interventionists can't always do beyond their own. Case load, they can look at it broadly and really help help with that piece. So I I guess I was just trying to. Seek a little clarity on the role of the coach as the um, district envisions it, because I feel like there's still a lot of people that are. Feeling some concern around this and thinking it means that their child is not going to have the intervention that they need.
Ms. Divine, oh, sorry, Madam Chair, I should through the chair. Yeah, okay, so through the chair. Um, Ms. Divine, such a great point. Why don't we make it a goal that at the April twelfth? Uh, in the superintendent. Ms. Divine, such a great point, why don't we make it a goal that at the April twelfth uh in the superintendent update? I will bring forward uh our um job description, our draft job description of those positions. Uh, in the superintendent's report uh to review with the committee, similar to the innovation and uh. Digital learning director position.
That would be great, thanks.
So I will work with Ms. Friend to ensure that we have that for our Octo, our. April twelfth meeting.
All right, Mike, did you want to take the mic?
Well, sure, I, you know, hearing everything from um. The public about the budget has been um kind of a granular view of the um, the budget and the budgetary process. Uh, and I would just like to take maybe a slightly broader approach and, and kind of view this process from the ten thousand foot view as I think it's appropriate. Most people who have been involved in the process know that the district has to walk a really fine line between. Well, lots of things, um, but um, you know, the balance is always managing fiscal realities. Of uh each of the member towns and advancing the programmatic excellence. And the academic product that meets our stated vision and, and our mission. And this is not an easy task to walk that line. Preparing, preparing this year's budget with the school committee, for those again that have not been following over the past few months. Has meant that the committee has been an integral, or I should say as integral a part of this budget as I have known since I've been in this committee. And have really authentically been contributors at each and every step. So I think it's important to thank Superintendent Downing and Business and Operations Manager Ross Melkaren and. Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend for not only developing the meat and the bones of the budget, but uh also in keeping the committee and the towns. Fully abreast of efficiencies and obligations and timelines. Of uh programmatic and curricular and staffing changes and state funding throughout the process. Um, and I've said this directly to Superintendent Downing, but I, but I'll say it publicly. It is um abundantly clear what drives discretionary budgetary change in our district. Because everything is relentlessly and faithfully, faithfully tied back to our strategic plan and other district mandates. Um, and I think the approach gives credence to the hard work um and the input that have been provided. Uh, by all of our stakeholders, so. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined us um at every opportunity to stay informed. Of how the budget has been crafted, um, and they remain publicly available at regular school committee meetings. Budget and warrant meetings, the budget workshop, joint finance committee meeting, and of course at the public hearing, so. That inquiry should uh and, and, and ought to continue beyond the budget season in particular, because there's really no off season for the budget. Uh, and on a personal level, it's been really um, a really enriching experience for me and um. Just want to let it be known how much I appreciate the process, so that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I wonder if the, I know that the committee has had many bites at this apple, but I, I wonder if the committee has any other. Matters to discuss, Maureen?
Yeah, I feel like I can't not speak to this and so it's brought up so many times tonight, but the. The specialist converting to the, the coach role. The, the coach role seems very important and necessary across the district. I think the big concern is really. Well, how do we know that we can just convert the role? Rather than do we need a new role? Because where's the data saying? How much our specialists have on their plate right now? And. With that new coach position coming in, yes, I get that they're still going to be providing intervention, but. Will it be enough or is the coach going to come in right away, like three months down the line and be like? I suggest we need another specialist to cover all, all of the need. So that, that's just the fear because the budget process takes so long. That if they do come in and say, hey, we need another specialist. Then we have to wait a whole nother year to get that in the budget. And it does feel like we try to avoid adding positions to keep the towns happy. Which I get it has to be approved, but we need to put the students first. So that's just what I wanted to say about the coach and specialist questions that I've been hearing from people.
If I may respond, Madam Chair?
Sure.
My response to that, I think simply be the conversion to of those positions to coaches. Is putting the students first. It is a higher leverage move for all students. For us to advance the work that we need to advance in the strategic plan and it's not coming at the sacrifice of students. We'll be managing that, Ms. Mazona, I can't disagree with you more that I would, I would love to have more positions. And I would love to have more opportunities and I would love to work more on. Uh, you know, various elements and offerings across the district, expanding um. You know, world languages to sixth grade and middle schools, for instance. The fact of the matter is, we have financial constructs in front of us in front of the three towns that we have to be good partners with at the same time. And ensure that we're offering our educational programming, so we're not cutting any educational programming, we're shifting strategy. And that strategy is well thought out and well defined. And it, to come at it, it's, it's sort of the, the forest and the trees, right? And, and I get it, I wholeheartedly understand our members of the public. That spoke to their individual students actually receiving interventions, I get it, those aren't going to be taken away if the student needs it. My hope is that those interventions are highly effective, so the students don't need the interventions anymore, that's what our goal should be. And by bringing in these coaches, we're going to be better. And we're going to be able to do those things to, to reduce the demand. Um, because ultimately, wouldn't that be great that we didn't have a demand to need them at all, right? It, it's kind of, you know, you hear special education teachers, maybe Ms. Divine can speak to this, that, you know. Sometimes our goal is to work ourselves out of a job because we just want our students to succeed. And, and in this model, it's putting kids first because we're changing what we're doing. It, it's that attitude of Einstein saying, repeat what you're doing, you'll get the same result. And right now, we're changing gears because we're shifting to get a different result. And that different result is what I believe is going to be most impactful for our students across the school system in the future. And we'll be, and now we have the tools in place where we're going to be able to manage that well, whereas we've never had that before. So we've invested a lot in these tools and we need the experts, the ones that are going to do the very data analysis that you're talking about. That are going to be able to come back and support the need for things based on actual data as opposed to observation. So all of that is going to make us a stronger school system and making this move.
Okay, thanks Kirk, thanks Maureen, I think Scott was next.
Yeah, thank you, um, so I have a bit of a quick question, um, if I recall the calendar and the timing correctly. We're actually voting on this budget next week. And I was wondering, will we get the budget broken down by like line item? So to the extent that we are asked to approve the budget and prove warrants and the budget, the warrants we're approving are like, you know, in different categories. Is the budget that we're going to be approving also broken down into those same categories?
Uh, yes, you will get the entire book, Mr. Powell.
Okay, thank you.
Um, wasn't that provided at, like the preliminary version perhaps provided at the budget workshop?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have one.
Karen, that was posted in the meeting materials, if I recall, I don't have it pulled up, right?
We've updated the budget all along, so all of the um. Categories of expenditure, all the revenues, all of those different areas are all updated uh with each presentation. Um, so tonight's meeting materials should include a PDF of that entire uh document.
And the one I'm referring, that's like the really colorful one.
Very long and yes, colorful.
Does that help Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome, over to Sharon.
I think we just had a lot of conversation tonight about the uh coach thing. Try and figure out how to put my hand down, there we go. I'm, I'm thinking of it as another perspective um that I'd like to. Kind of throw out there to consider and that is when I hear um this idea of conversion to a coach. That to me does not say. We're losing services or we're losing um opportunities for our children to. Receive what they need, what to me that says is. We are using our resources to teach all of our teachers how to be. Better teachers, how to be more effective in the classroom and working with all students. And so if a coach then is able to help teachers. Work more effectively with all students in their classrooms, then we. In actuality are elevating everyone, we're elevating our students, we're elevating our teachers, we're elevating. The needs of everyone by doing that and so when I hear them, the idea of coach. To me, that is exciting, to me that means we're giving more and not that we're taking away. But I think that there's a lot of confusion about what that term really means and that. Maybe it's really useful to really think about. Um, helping everybody understand. And maybe, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I am having a wrong uh idea about what that means, but I think it would be really good to help everyone to really understand. What um. What the idea of coach really means, because it, I, I see it as something very different.
It seems like we perhaps are going to hear about, a little bit more about the position on the twelfth. So thanks Sharon for that. Let's go over to Amy.
Thank you, let me see if I can raise, lower my hand here, um, two things, uh, I wanted to. Also kind of follow up on what Mike said, just acknowledging that the. Process of watching the budget unfold this year was really impressive. And. This is my third year on the committee, I think this is the first time that I can recall getting updates each week showing how the budget progressed. Um, the assessments changed and. Um, and what was behind those changes, I think that's. You know, the, the process that the superintendent has put in place is really a good one and um we're fortunate that. There was so much transparency and so many opportunities along the way for. To keep us informed and to allow us to ask questions and, and offer feedback, so just wanted to. State that uh for the record. Um, the other thing that I wanted to comment on that came up during the budget hearing was, you know, whether. Um, there seemed to be concern expressed by a few members of our communities that um this equity audit is. Perhaps not the best use of our district's resources, but I'd like to go on record and, and say that I'm fully support. You know. Getting an equity audit done, spending fifty thousand dollars on this seems like a small investment. For the three thousand plus students that we have and that um. You know, I, as a school committee, I don't understand how we can really judge. How well we are meeting the needs of our students. Without this type of information. I know Leah used the words that information is power and I know Kirk. Likes to use as much data as possible to inform his decisions and I see this as another way of gathering data. That helps us figure out which areas we need to focus our attention on as a school committee, so. I want to thank Kirk for including it in our budget since it was identified as an area um. As a goal of this school committee to, to get that kind of information, so thank you.
Thanks Amy. Any further deliberation? Maureen?
I had a question just on um something that was said during the public hearing earlier. Um, sorry, it's on the same topic as the coach. Kirk, did you say that there would, there could be a chance that we'd also utilize our special educators? If there was more of a need. Coming out of um literacy and, and math as the coaches start doing their deep dives?
No, 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 um, let me explain it this way, if this is um our literacy specialist. And they're delivering special education services to a student. Say through um a, a language-based program, for instance. Our special educators are also trained in teaching that language-based program. So that student can be taught by somebody that has the special education license. Does that make sense? So as that service is happening for the student receiving that language-based service by the literacy specialist. There's room for the special educator to do that, one example of that is um. We. Uh, if, if the hail staffing, the special education went from three point O to three point five. Because half of the time of that literacy specialist is needed specifically for some IEPs. So that, that is guaranteed through, through that special education staffing. So for students. Uh, that have an IP would be off the workload of that literacy specialist and onto the workload of the special educator. That has the same certifications to teach that material. Thus freeing up space for that special educator, that specialist uh to work with uh the overall population.
Oh, because there's, there's specialists that are working with IEPs right now, I thought it was all covered by special ed.
Uh, no, there are some specialists that are working with students on IEPs and their targeted intervention, so that's what's going to free up some of the space as well.
Okay, and that's, that would be the same concept for, for math, right? There's no math specialist in this, in stone now, it's just going to be the coach.
I will say, Ms. Mazona, it really is a predominantly a reading thing. More than a math thing, uh, our math specialist may be working with some students with some, and some targeted interventions in that way. But this is what our principals do in terms of their, their operational decision-making, together with their faculty and staff as they build their instructional design through their master schedule.
Yeah, and one of the questions that I had brought up during budgets and warrants was. When the principals were looking at this. Change of position. Do they have in the back of their minds like? How many kids get these services and is it really, is it truly realistic? That's what I'm just trying to get to, I think, is it truly realistic to do this? Or is it going to be a struggle year? Where there's, there's kids that unfortunately are. We're just waiting for the data and, and they don't get as much of the direct support that they should be getting because we're, we're trying to find the data.
Forgive me if I.
Just because of the transition.
Forgive me if I sound a little cheeky, Ms. Mazona, um, you know, being now, this is my. Gosh, what am I at now, almost my thirtieth year in education, I have yet to find a year that wasn't the struggle year. Just because by nature of being an educator, you always feel like you can do more for your students and so. Um, we're going to have our trips, we're going to have our challenges, I'm not, I'm not going to say this is going to be like a panacea, I'm not. And, and we're going to have some moments where we feel like we're up against, that's just real and that's honest. Um, but what we have to determine is. How we meet the needs through our instructional efficiencies, raising the practice of all teachers. And at the same time, use our measurement tools to understand the impact of that work. We have to begin a culture of measuring the impact of our instruction and talking openly about it. That's when substantive school change, school improvement really happens. And that's what these folks are going to help us do, that's just going to improve the overall instruction happening in all classrooms.
All right. Uh, Amy?
Yeah, regarding this, this issue, it seems to be um an area of concern for several people. I'm just, I know that Kirk um Superintendent Downing said that he would be sharing a job, job description, but it sounded like that might not happen until April. Is that right? And we're voting on the budget next week. I'm just wondering if it's possible to provide more information on it before then um. Uh, I'm just wondering if it's possible to provide more information on it before then, um, before.
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to, Ms. Cohen. I can, I can tell you, no, we won't be able to put that together by next week.
The job descriptions?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and could you remind um, me and maybe others who are
I would use that opportunity to also remind the committee i- in terms of the budget, weren't, it, the, the coaching positions aren't necessarily under the auspices of an approval. It's a shifting of responsibilities of.
That's what I was just gonna ask. That's.
So it's not, it's not really, that was, that was provided as color and context, because we believe in transparency and showing how we're gonna meet the elements of our strategic plan.
So this is budget neutral. That's what I was leading up to. Like, what is in the budget for, for those of us who have to vote on this budget? Um, and I wouldn't put myself in the cat, the category of having particular concern over this issue. I'm just trying to
Yeah.
price out what the effect on the budget is.
Yeah, so it is a price neutral. It's, it's a zero, zero budgetary impact. So if I was the sneaky superintendent, we would have just done it and then told you about it on the other side. But uh, we, we do believe in transparency and work and, and we want to honor the process of the strategic plan by pointing out the specific moments and moves that we're making relative to uh, expanding our leadership cords, MTS systems of support, uh, professional development and raising the practice of our teachers. Those are all elements that are sprinkled throughout the strategic plan that we're gonna be able to lift through this model.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, anything new that you guys are interested in discussing?
Madam Chair, if I may just say, I, I really have appreciated the commentary and the drilling down on the issues that we've done this evening. Um, because what it does for us as a team is it raises to the surface some of the thinking out there so that we can kind of demystify some of the concerns a- address some of the, the realities and i- in an effort to be a better school system. So I just want to thank uh, the folks that, that have, have pressed on that. Um, that has been very helpful to us.
Great. I see Joe's hand.
Madam Chairman, not to be cheeky, but if there are no further questions, I will actually move to adjourn this meeting.
Thanks Joe, I'll second that. Uh, let's do the vote. Joe, you get to go first.
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Myself, yes. Scott?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Alright guys, that's what we call a short one.
I'd like to say goodnight to Scott's cat.
She really wanted to participate.
She's blurred out, we can't see.
It was a hair-raising event for her.
Oh, cute.
Alright.
Alright, bye guys.
Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight.
Bye-bye.